I'd like to call the October 9th meeting of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee to order. Would the roll taker please take the roll?
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewitan. Alderman Chocky.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Kneipp.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum present. First item is approval of minutes of September 11th, 2008. Do I have, I'll make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Any questions, comments? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is report and recommendation on the analysis and presentation of the train station construction bids. And, did you want to pick this up, Mr. Alderman Cadella, or?
Well, you know what? I think, yeah, probably, let's let John Forrest start with the rundown, and then if I feel the need, or any other questions that I need to ask or answer, maybe we can pick it up from there. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Forrest, thank you.
Hopefully, we will have all the answers that you may raise tonight. Heitman Architects is here to back me up, in case I don't, and maybe we'll luck out, and we will be able to answer most of your questions. You all did get a memo from me that went out a few days ago. What I thought I would do is maybe just expand on that a little bit, give you a little background information about the commuter station. Presently, we have 58 commuter trains that go through Wooddale every day, 40 freight trains. As far as ridership on the commuter line, we have about 100 people that board during peak time, and the daily average of riders from Wooddale is 551 riders. The existing station was built in 1972, but there are no plans available. They were apparently lost in a fire at Metro's archives. We have had two meetings with Metro at their downtown office. The first one was to present the 60 percent plans which were approved by Metro. The second meeting was to approve the 90 percent completed plans which Metro also approved. We've had a couple of teleconferences with them, along with the architect, and we did have a site meeting with Metro staff, and Wooddale staff, and the architects. Metro is going to be cooperating with us in this. They will be supplying some new exterior electrical cabinets that are going to need to be replaced and relocated, but the contractor who's awarded the contract, it'll be their job to install these cabinets. Metro does require that the contractor hire a flagman for use during some exterior phases of the construction that are going to be within 25 feet of the railroad tracks. That will probably be during the demolition of the existing building, and probably setting of the roof trusses for a new building. Other than that, the contractor will be required to put a safety fence around the station. As long as they work within that fence, they should not need to have the flagman out there. Problem, one of the problems with this project is that during certain phases of the construction, when they are going to be working close to the tracks, they're limited from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So they're going to have a short workday, but I do understand that the architects have spoken with staff at Metro, and I think, Jim, you said that we got a little, we're going to be able to get a few extra hours working time out of them. So that's, again, going to help the project speed along a little bit. When they're doing the interior work, or they're further than 25 feet from the tracks, there won't be any restrictions on work hours. They're able to work from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., just like any other contractor in Wooddale. Metro has agreed to supply a trailer that we can put on the site and use as a temporary station while the project's underway, but our contractor will be required to build the stairs up into that trailer, and a handicapped accessible ramp into that trailer as well. We will have to supply a temporary electric hookup to that trailer as well. And the other prep work that we'll need to do before the project started is that the handicap parking spaces on the east side of the station will have to be relocated into the general parking lot, so we will have to do some temporary restriping out there. And then when the project's finished, we can put them back where they were and restripe the parking lot. After we sent the notice out, or we published the notice to bid, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Twenty-seven general contractors and subcontractors attended that meeting. They asked some good questions, which were subsequently responded to by myself and by the architectural firm with some addendums to the bid package. Nine general contractors ended up submitting bids. The bids ranged from $1,274,000 to $1,580,000. There was one item that we had the contractors include in the bid as an alternate, and that was, I think you probably remember, we spoke earlier about putting some photovoltaic shingles on one roof plane to collect solar energy to be able to convert to electricity. That will add about $100,000 to the project, and it's my understanding that through an agreement that we have with ComEd, we don't really pay an electric bill for the station anyway, so that might be something. The roof will be constructed, so that if at some point in the future we decide we want to retrofit it with those shingles, structurally, the building will be able to handle it. So it's something we might want to put, you know, on the back burner for now, but at some point in time, we could move forward with that. As far as the bid amounts, if we use the second set of figures from the memo that I have supplied to you, and that set of figures assumes that once the original building is demoed, that the full foundation would need to be replaced. I mean, we had the contractors include that in their price as an alternate item. In a perfect world, we're hoping that once the building is torn down, we'll discover that the foundation that's existing will be able to be reused, and then we'll put an extension on that runs to the west to expand the size of the building. If that does not occur, and they have to replace the entire foundation, we had the contractors include that as an alternate item on the bid that could be added to the bid amount if need be. So the second set of figures are, is what it would be if the contractors would have to replace the foundation. So if we work backwards from the lowest bid, and we take out some of the items that we were unaware of at the time, the council budgeted the 1.2 million for the station, what we would be taking out would be the cost for the sanitary and water service extensions, landscaping with an irrigation system. We did have to put a cold weather allowance in here for the contractors. We put a flat figure of 25,000 in there, so that all the contractors would be working off the same figure. And, again, it's, since this project may stretch through the winter, and the exterior of the building is masonry, the building would have to be protected and ideally maintained at about 50 degrees inside the enclosure while the masonry sets up and the mortar dries. If it's 10 degrees outside, obviously, that needs to be protected. So we did figure that fee in there. A fire suppression system was included in the design of the building. It was something that we talked about with the architects when they were doing the design. It is not required by the building code. It's not really that big of a ticket item when you look at the big picture, and it seemed like a good idea to put the fire suppression system not only in the building, but then also extend it outside the building under the canopy that extends from either side of the building. It'll have to be a dry system, because you can't have those pipes on the exterior filled with water. And then the other thing was the Metro flagman allowance. We knew that you were, they were going to have to use a flagman, but then when we actually sat down and crunched some numbers, it could end up being as much as $10,000 for the use of a flagman. So again, if you take these five line items off the bid, the low bid, where actually the building comes in without, within about 4 percent of what we initially thought the building was going to cost. So though the low bid is over what was budgeted for it, again, if you take these factors out, you find that the price is actually pretty close to what we originally anticipated. The other figure that's in here towards the end of, end of the memo that you got is, I call it a contingency fund. Can be referred to as a miscellaneous fund. That's to cover some of the costs that might be unforeseen at this point, and also some costs that we will anticipate, but were not figured into the bid. There, go ahead.
Before you go any further, John, on this one bid, the lowest one here, 1,274, when you say they encompass everything, that's the extra sewer and water that we thought we were going to do in-house, right?
Yeah, the 1,200, all the bids that are here.
Include everything you just said.
Include sanitary and water extensions.
Foundations.
They include the new foundation.
If, okay, if needed.
They include the landscaping with an irrigation system.
So if we don't need the foundation, we're deducting off the 1.2, right?
Actually, the lowest bid stayed the same. I think he may be anticipating and just replacing the foundation regardless.
Okay.
The other bids did add money if they had to replace the foundation and not use the existing. As far as the contingency fund, that would be, every project has got to have one. I spoke to somebody who's worked for several years in the construction industry, not only as a superintendent and a consultant, but also as a general contractor. The figure he likes to use is between 12 and 15 percent of the project total. I mean, I've heard any sort of a range on that from 5 percent to 15 percent of the project total, so I tried to figure a little bit heavy. But out of that contingency fund, for example, we have to take the security cameras out of the building and then replace them when the new building is put in. We've also decided that it would make sense to buy one additional camera, have in the building, that way, all the sections of the building will be covered by their own camera. We have to relocate the coin boxes that the commuters use when they pay for their parking every day, and then ultimately place those in their new location with, as part of the permanent structure. The parking lot, as I said before, is going to have to be restriped a couple of times. There may be delays in the weather that impact us, not only the city, as well as the contractor. There were some things on the plan, for example, the decorative new fence that would run down the line, that was not included in the base bid from the contractors. If we want to go forward with that, that would be something that would come out of this contingency fund. Exterior benches and trash receptacles were not included as part of the base bid. The interior benches were included, but not exterior benches and trash receptacles. And if we wanted to go forward with this budget, or with this project, with some new platform lighting, that would also be an additional cost we would have to incur. So the contingency fund, I mean, the amount, the dedicated amount can be flexible. As I say, I tried to figure a little bit high to try and prepare for worst-case scenarios. Hopefully, it would turn out being much less than that. I have had a few conversations with the city attorney's office. We put them in contact with Metro's attorney, because what we want to do is verify that any agreements we have with Metro are current, and to the best that they can, protect the interests of Wooddale. I talked to the city attorney last thing today. She has not gotten anything finalized yet with Metro's attorney. He's been dragging his feet getting back to her. So how that'll ultimately play out at this point, I can't tell you right now. Hopefully, I would have that information for you by next week's council meeting. Also, we have to apply for, once we do decide on a contractor, we have to submit an application for what they call write-of-entry, for all the contractors be able to enter Metro's right of way and perform work there. So it's just some paperwork that we can fill out on the internet and email in. As I said, Heitman Architects and Associates are here. I guess we're ready for questions.
Alderman Cadella.
With regards to the budget, it's my understanding that, it was actually this council's understanding that at one point, City Services was hoping to be able to serve, to supply the installation of the sewer and the water extension to the building, and that somewhere along the way it was determined that that is not a task that can be done in-house. However, it is my understanding that there may be monies in the city service budget that was set aside for this specifically. Now, maybe it's something you can answer, Brad, but if that's, if that's accurate, that is going to account for, John, approximately, how much? Over $100,000 of this budget, right?
From what I understand, yeah, I would prefer to have Brad Wilson probably address that question, but it is my understanding that at one point in time, former director Holm did have some money put into the sewer and water fund for the sewer and water installation. Apparently, staff was going to do it, but once we duly the site and investigated, it was determined that it might be a little bit much for them to do. So, I don't know, Brad, if you have some figures?
Before Brad picks it up, if he was even going to take it, what is your best guess? Because I don't think the bids broke it out as to what that figure is from the contractors. That's what I'm looking for. Was that in there?
Um, I believe for the installation to be directionally bored as opposed to an open trench, it was going to be about 104,000.
Okay, so approximately 100,000, a little bit more off of that 1.274 million.
Correct.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to just, you know, bring up is that if we need to maintain and stay within our budget, the landscaping, I certainly would have no problem deferring that until the 0910 budget. If, once again, if it had to be, although I do believe we have, we have funds within the city's operating budget beyond the three to six months minimum that we need to have. So I think we could easily do this project without having to float a loan, without having to, to cause any detriment to budget anywhere else, but I'm just trying to find the balance. Do we do that, or do we shave things off but still get this project going? Thanks, Dan.
Well, it's my understanding, and perhaps I would like the city manager to address this, that because of the type of project it is, and that it was sealed bids, I don't believe we have a lot of flexibility as far as pulling things out of one bid or another bid that might mean we would have to actually send it out to rebid, or at least give everybody who submitted bids the same opportunity. I don't know, is that somewhat correct? Okay.
So it would be, it would be awarded as bid, is what, is really the way, direction we need to go with this?
It was solicited for the contractors to submit a bid covering the entire project.
Alderman Wesley.
You see, to bore it, how much is it going to be to open it and put the piping?
I believe open trenching, as opposed to directional boring, adds between 30 and 35,000 to the job.
Because if I am mistaken, there are some major gas lines in that area.
There is one gas line that, probably what they would end up doing is a combo platter. They would probably cut an open, see, to hook up to the water, that's going to be not too bad, because they'll be able to run down the south side of Division for a while. To hook up the sanitary sewer, they're going to have to hook up to a manhole in a vault that is on Division, and it's just a little bit west of that little townhome development there. And what their thought is, is to bring it across Division, and then do the directional boring through the parkway right there. That'll avoid an area that would have a lot of trees in it and so forth. And they will have to cross a gas line, but they may do that section of it as an open trench.
Okay. Do I follow one more?
Please do.
The other question I had, John, you are correct. We don't know how much money is floating out there for the sewer and water. We haven't, I don't think Brad found it, or did Brad find it?
Mr. Wilson.
I did quite a bit of research and talked to a few people involved with the compiling of the budgets over the last few years. Originally, there was a line in the budget listed as water sewer connection for the Metro's train station back in, probably, 04, 05, and that number was around $80,000. As the project continued to get pushed back and pushed back, the determination by staff, particularly Ms. Powers and Mr. Holm, was to remove the actual verbiage of water sewer main extension to the Metro train station from the budget and bury it in the water-s sewer main replacement line. Approximately two years ago, that line was moved out of the water sewer fund due to the fact that the fund would have been in a significant deficit position, which is the reason we're doing the water rate study analysis later on. They moved it into the capital projects fund. Originally, this did start out at 80,000. They then determined that the way that they were going to do it was not the most efficient, probably due to trees and the gas mains you were speaking of, and determined that the cost would be between 100 and 150,000. So they buried between 100 and 150,000 in that water sewer replacement line, which now currently sits in the capital projects budget at 1.2 million for the last two years. As a side note, last year, they only spent about $400,000 out of that, just due to, I guess, the nature, the number of the roads that were actually redone, and the complete infrastructure underneath that was redone. And I believe if you look at the complete underground infrastructure this year, it's not going to get you to the 1.2 million again, which would be true based upon the fact that monies are buried in that line to accommodate for the extension of this water and sewer main.
Okay.
Did that, did that answer the question?
Yeah, but I have one other question. I have no problem awarding a contract to them, but my only concern is that we want complete control of that train station. Therefore, I don't care if it's a 45-year lease or whatever they decide. No, I want in the writing that if we build that train station, they cannot come in and say, now we're going to take this coffee shop off because we don't want it. I don't want that if we're spending this kind of money, we want complete control of that train station. If not, I'll tell you one thing, if not, we move it off that site and we build it in our parking lot that we own. That's the way I feel about it. I don't know how the other council do, but I don't want them coming and say, you built a beautiful train station, but we don't like the coffee shop, we don't like this, we're going to do whatever we want with it. Just because we got a lease, we are buying, we are actually putting out the money for this train station. Unless they giving me a half million dollars down the line, or a million dollars to pay for it down the line, it ain't going to happen. That's the only way I would approve this situation.
Mr. Forrest, do you have any kind of an answer to that?
I don't, as I say. I know the city attorney has, has had a couple of conversations and some back-and-forth emails with Keith Pardonnee, who is Metro's attorney that handles this end of the legal work for them. As I said, I did speak to Mary Dixon about 4:30 today, and apparently, Mr. Pardonnee has been sort of dragging his feet getting back to her, so they do not have anything resolved at this point. I would like some direction, though, from the council or the city manager as to be a little more specific as what you're looking for when you're saying you want to be sure we keep control of the station. I think we need to define that a little more and give the city attorney some parameters to work in, because the bottom line is, we're building a station on property that Metro owns.
Mr. Duthwait.
I've had this conversation with the city attorney before, actually, several times. Presently, there is an operating agreement in effect with Metro for a long period of time, and I'm going to say 40 years, whereby Metro owns the land and the city owns the building. And that might sound a little bit cumbersome, but it's really to both parties' advantage, because neither can take any action without the consent of the other. You know, if we own the land and the building, then Metro would lose some control. If Metro owned the land and the building, we'd lose control. The existing operating agreement says that if we were to take down the train station or decide we didn't want a train station, that we'd have to deliver to Metro a clean piece of land, essentially demolish the existing one. So I think it protects both parties' interests that the land stays with Metro and the building stays with the city. Mary is drafting a revision to the operating agreement, and I've told her that part of that operating agreement needs to give the city the right to have a kiosk for coffee, newspapers. If we want, we have the right to install or have a bank install an ATM. And she's very clear, she's, we made it very clear between she and, between Mary and me, that these are the components of the operating agreement that are going to have to be factored in before we sign anything. And again, you know, we can, we can go ahead and, and award the contract next week, but before we commence work, we're going to make sure that we have the i's dotted and the t's crossed with respect to that operating agreement.
And we really don't have any ideas to how long it'll take them to sign that?
I spoke to Mary a couple days ago, and she said she's going to draft the operating agreement and send it directly to Metro rather than waiting for them to draft something and send it to us. We're going to take the ball by the horns, bull by the horns, and draft something and send it to them to, to get it moving along.
Mr. Coles.
I got one question. Why do we always pick the lowest bidder? I mean, seriously, why do we always pick the lowest bidder? There's, between the first and second bidder, it's $23,134. And why do we always come up with the lowest bidder, and then we have problems? We had a lowest bidder on Dunley, and he went belly up, and we was fighting him for, I don't know how many years. Why do we always pick the lowest bidder?
Well, typically...
I know you, I know you put it off of bids, and the guy, they all bid what they figured that it should cost, and then all of a sudden, we have to put a, we have to make a change and add to the, add to the budget, an amendment, so we get more money, because somebody made a mistake. And I, I've been on this, almost eight years on this place, and we, I've seen it more than once, that we picked a lowest bidder, and then we have trouble. Dunley, when we did my street, was the one, ever saw a new street with patches in it? Brand-new street, wasn't even a year old, and they put patches in it. So I'm just telling you what I think about lowest bidders. Lowest bidders goof up, and we get stuck for it.
Typically, procurement ordinances require cities on a project like this to award to the lowest responsible bidder. And that includes, when we take a look at these, we look at references, we look at other work that they've done, and we look at the span between the bids. In this case, you're only talking about $30,000 at the margin between the lowest bid and the second lowest bid. If it had been $100,000, then the alarm bells go off, and we say to ourselves, you know, they might be leaving something out. They might not be a reputable firm, and we start to investigate a little harder in terms of why the disparity between the bids. But in this particular case, the difference between the lowest bid and the second lowest bid is so small that we think they're bidding apples and apples. And John has done some checking with...
Okay, that's all I want to know. I mean, I, I've seen it happen more than once. I've seen it more, happened more than once that we, we put an amendment on a budget because something that was left off, and we pay more for the lower bidder than we do for the highest bidder. And that, that happens.
John told me early on that these guys have, this company has done work in the city before, and he has no problem with the quality of their work.
Fine. Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll let Alderman Cadella make a motion.
Maybe this is a question for John, or maybe for Wally. What exactly is staff looking for tonight? A motion to direct staff to move forward with constructing a contract that we would then vote on and approve next week?
It would be a motion to award the bid to FGB Corporation in the amount of 100, If it comes out of committee, that motion would need to be made next week, and then we would have the city attorney draft the necessary contracts.
Okay, very good. Then I will retract what I said, and I will make a motion to award the bid to FBG or GB? FGB Corporation? I've got two different things in front of me here, sorry. For the amount of $1,274,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments before we vote? Alderman Wesley.
Question. Even though we award this contract tonight, is this contract in void, I mean, is on board right off the bat without the legal opinion on the right of way with the train station control? I understand that, but the council, if we pass this as a council, full council, committee, it goes in a sense agenda and it passed. My concern still against this is we still don't have the confirmed documents from Metro or our attorney. I don't feel comfortable awarding, like I said, I have no problem doing it, but until we have a document from Metro and our attorney, I cannot support giving this to them until I have that. I have that in front of me.
We won't sign this contract until the operating agreement with Metro has been approved. I mean, the, the motion to award the bid is just that, just a motion to award the bid. We still have the paperwork to go through. And that doesn't, a motion to award the bid does not commit the city to signing anything at this stage of the game, and we won't do that until we make sure that we're, we've got all the i's dotted with, with Metro.
But this bid is only locked in for 60 days, though, am I correct, John? So if we don't have anything by, within 60 days, then we're back to the drawing board here.
We're making a recommendation to the full council tonight. That's all. We're not making the final decision. So we can, if you'd like, we can ask that the legal part of it be added to the motion, that it all be straight, straightened out by the lawyers before next week? Did you want that?
I really would like to see that. I mean, before the final vote, I'm, I'm for the project, believe me, I'm for the project. I'm only watching the best interests of the city.
If we can get this nailed down by next week with Metro, we'll bring back a copy of the operating agreement for you to take a look at. I can't tell you that'll happen, because they're a big bureaucracy, but again, all I can tell you is we won't sign any documents with the contractor until we know that we're in good shape with, with Metro.
That's fine, and I'll accept that.
Okay, Alderman, can I?
Yeah, as part of the motion, and if we could add to it, if the motioner second agrees, subject to attorney approval.
Attorney approval or staff approval of attorney findings?
Well, I mean, you know, Bond Dixon is going to bring a operating agreement back to us and say it looks okay to us. It contains what the city manager asked of us to put in it, and we're good to go.
In that case, the motioner agrees with attorney approval.
Does a secondary agree? Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Okay. I'd just like to state that I appreciate the work that's gone into this over the years, especially recently by Alderman Kedala and staff. And with the B4 section, or the B4 zoning that we have in the middle of the city, we, I believe we really do need a somewhat of a showplace as a train station rather than the small building we have now. So I think this is the right way to go, even though we started out with a lot less money, but I know everything's gone up since that time when we started, what, four, five years ago, talking about this. So if the...